All the meeting to order, I want to welcome everybody here. We have a lot on the agenda today, and so we will move to the opening, and I'll call on councillor Fair to bring the opening, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During the last few weeks, Steinbeck lost a few of our pioneers. Walter F. Reimer was a businessman who contributed to this community in several tangible ways. He bought the business known as Reimer Overhead Doors from his mother after his father passed away in 1957, and ran it for 30 years. He was a respected businessman with a generous spirit. This seems to be common to many business people in this community. Then on Sunday, we lost Peter Barkman, founder of Barkman Concrete, which is one of the biggest employers in the city. He was a humble man, a visionary who gave much back to his community. He was a man of integrity and had a very soft heart. I spoke to a man many years ago, who spoke with Mr. Barkman regarding a trip he made to a third world country many years ago. This man traveled with him, and he had this discussion. He made him promise, Mr. Barkman promised that he, regardless of how great a need he would see, that he would not write a check immediately, but maybe wait a given amount of time before he would contribute to the cause there. And he agreed to that. And I think that was a wise counsel, because sometimes he would, we might have a tendency to give and not leave enough for seed. Now, Mr. Barkman was a very wise man, and he, I think he took, he was very young when this happened, so. Barkman Concrete has always been a community-minded business, and is still keeping up with those benevolent characteristics to this day. When I think of the growth of our city, I sometimes have concerns when I see local businesses sold to people outside of our community. There's always a concern that people from outside our community won't have the same community spirit that a homegrown company like God Let's Start Here might have. I have also seen some businesses come in and adopt the same community spirit, and that's special to see. Steinbeck is a great community that has many very generous people, and I am thankful to be able to live in a community like this. These two men were pioneers in this community, but their legend can live on in each of us as we continue to foster this kind of benevolence.
Thank you, councillor Fair. We have the agenda in front of us. There are a couple additions, and there is 11D, there is a letter that council received, there is also 12A, and there is, 12A will be a resolution from councillor Penner. You can add those to the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the amended agenda, please? Councillor Siemens, second by councillor Penner. Any discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor. Okay. We have the minutes in front of us on page one. Can I have a motion to approve, please? Councillor Fair, second by councillor Swagstra. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the question, all those in favor. Okay. Business arising from the minutes. No public hearings scheduled. We will now move to 8A, the 2016 provincial trunk highway number 12 improvement program. Mr. Workington, this is on page eight. I'll ask you to introduce that tender, please.
Yes, for members of council, the information package does begin on page eight. There's a number of pages of information in your agenda package with respect to the tender that was issued for the intersection improvements at PTH 12 and Penfeld Drive. There was, sorry, a total of five bids received, with the tender closing on March 17th. Recommendation by the city's project engineer, MMM Group, is to award the tender to Highway Construction Inc. as a low bidder for the amount of $2,232,578. This is a continuing project with respect to the urban highway fund programming that the city has received approved funding for in order to improve a variety of projects along PTH 12. Recommendation is that council approve the tender.
Okay, thank you. And can you just tell us what portion of that 2.2 million is city money and what portion is not?
This particular program is a 50-50 cost share. Fifty percent of the project is to be covered by the province of Manitoba. The balance of the project will be funded by the city's capital development reserve. The total budget that has been allocated for this project is 2.5 million, and with the combination of the tender being issued, as well as the expected design and engineering work, the total cost is expected to be approximately 2.47 million.
All right, thank you. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councillor Fair?
I'd like to move to approve the tender.
Thank you, second by councillor Penner, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to approve, to move this motion, because it's, that's been proven to have been a very busy intersection. This council made a priority to make Steinbeck a safer place to be, and this is under the step in this process. This came in well under the engineer's budget, which was $2,781,000, which is, it's always good to see when we can come in under the budget. So, one thing that I found particularly interesting is that the four top bids here all came in within $100,000 of each other, and I think that's a bit of a comfort level for the contractor to know that he's in the zone, he didn't go and miss anything on the bid, so.
Thank you. Councillor Penner, anything further?
Just in addition to councillor Fair's comments, I just want to reiterate that this is a good example of a partnership with the province, so that we can accomplish some very needed intersection changes to our city. So I'm very happy for that.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anything closing? No. Counsel, this kind of brings us to a close after this is complete. We've seen Park Road, we've seen, we've seen Penfeld, we've seen the Stonebridge intersection, we've also seen all the way down to Madison being improved. Number 12 is a safer street, and a more efficient street because of this program, and there'll be a little bit more pain this year before the gain, but it will be a good, good to see this actually happen, so, thank you. Call for the question, all those in favor. Okay. All right, and we will then move back to 7A, and that is Northview Developments is making a presentation. This is in regards to, I believe, the north section of the community. I'm going to be stepping out due to potential perceived conflict of interest, as one of the, one or two of the partners are also partners in the building that I own where my business is in, so. I'll ask councillor Fair to take over, please.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to close the council meeting, I'm going to ask Mr. Workington to introduce this, please.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, members of council, this was a request for delegation by Mr. Bob Schinkel of Northview Developments with respect to my understanding of a proposed development within the city of Steinbeck. I do not have any particular information that has been submitted, but I do understand that Mr. Schinkel is prepared to make a presentation.
Okay. I understand Mr. Chalock will be making a presentation. Mr. Chalock, would you like to take the podium, state your name and address? And we have the floor for 10 minutes.
Thank you. My name is David Chalock, Honorable Mayor and councillors. It's my pleasure to be here from Calgary, Alberta, actually. And before we get started, I found with interest your presentation with two of your constituents. On the way down, I read the Globe and Mail, and found that another valued member of your community, or at least he was born here, Vic Peters, was featured in the Globe and Mail.
That I missed.
And that was perhaps something that, I'll circulate that for you, but it was a very good article, and apparently his daughter is carrying on the tradition of curling, so it's that time of year. Yes, my name is David Chalock. I am representing Steinbeck Land Holding Partners Group today. My name is at the top, other partners are Gord Dick, Regent Ingrid Penner, Vic Penner, and Bob Schinkel. I'm a little bit nervous here, and I have to turn around, I hope I don't blind you here. You're probably wondering why I'm here and why we're standing here. The Steinbeck Land Holding is asking the city to authorize SLH to put swale drainage into our proposed commercial and industrial development in lieu of current specs for storm sewer damage. Now, I'm standing here before you because, you know, you might ask why I invested in Steinbeck. Well, I've been coming to Steinbeck an area for over 30 years, and I have great friends and business relationships here, and always admired the city as a municipality and city or town that was very progressive, and actually Linda Peters is here tonight, so Art and Rich are friends of mine, and I've done business. So, I've sort of morphed from agriculture, but my roots are in agriculture, into land development and other things. I sit on several boards, and you talk about community service, I've been president and chairman of the board of the Calgary Stampede. That's a very big community service organization where I come from. So I'd better turn around and do this. So you saw our request, the current status is an approved bareland condo development with low-pressure sewer, asphalt streets, and the swale drainage. There, I don't have to. So our aspiration, this is an important slide, is to upgrade that condo designation to a registered subdivision with gravity sewer, concrete streets that are 32 feet wide, and as well as the swale drainage. The only difference to the city standard is the swale drainage. Now, the rationale, I am coming from a city that's under great economic pressure at the moment, and it's so bad that there's 25% vacancy rate in downtown Calgary. I've been appointed to be chairman of an agri-food and agri-innovation group for the Calgary Economic Diversification Group, where we've received $7 million from the city council to look at diversification, job creation, et cetera. And municipalities and cities have got to be aware of pricing and what is cost competitive in the various marketplaces. So with this change in the designation, I think we can deliver a better, more attractive development that addresses the safety concerns. Of course, there's going to be an intersection there that we're paying for as well, but it allows for a cost competitive marketplace. And I lived through, there was a big flood in Calgary in 2013 where I lost my home, but certainly I've done lots of developments where we refer to it as storm water and storm sewer. But in my experience, in the event of a 100-year event, the swale and surface drainage is really, has the capacity to handle large volumes of water, and has the additional advantage of having that water go back into the surrounding soils, rather than be going down into a conventional storm sewer. And that infiltration back into the ground is good for groundwater. When you as a council, from a governance perspective, have to look at all the risks, I find that in business today, and in many jurisdictions, there's certainly lots of emphasis on risk, and perhaps not enough emphasis on what are the benefits and the risk-benefit equation. So, you know, I ask myself, as I'm from a distance, looking at what you as a council might think, or your staff, you know, what is a significant risk of not going to your highest standard by implementing a swale versus the other system? And are we spending too much time considering that versus looking at the opportunities? So, there are the three, the three different standards. There's your city standard that would, I suppose, be normal. This is what we're asking for, and we have had this prepared. Really, the only difference between the city standard and the SLH is the type of storm sewer drainage. So, these are recent pictures, actually, and this is the current business access today as businesses go from the service road. Another shot, and this is taken at, you know, spring breakup, the wettest time of the year. But if I look at what you have already okayed, the Hespler Industrial Park, you know, it's got, I don't know if that's paved or asphalt, but you've got the swale drainage. And someone might say, "Well, oh, look at that water, isn't that terrible?" Well, this is the wettest time of the year. It does show me that it's very effective at drainage, and there are no residual bodies of water anywhere, and so I think that's a very reasonable approach. We do have two lots that require frontage for our development. One is sold, the other is conditionally sold, and the timeliness of this subdivision and what it contributes to this community, I think, is important for all of us to consider. We have some letters of support. I will tell you that a local businessman that represents Volvo, his business is growing, he needs frontage, and he has purchased the one lot. Suncor, or Petro-Canada, not an insignificant business, is got a conditional purchase on another lot. And our neighbor, Big Freight, has given us a letter of support. Now, I want to remind you, as we've seen in Calgary, that cities have ups and downs and surprises, and I remember back seeing low-end windows in all houses being built in Calgary, and then, you know, they were a bedrock employer here, 1,500 people back in 2004, went through the financial crisis, had to downsize, and are currently back up to their capacity and capabilities, and hopefully with the dollar change, they'll continue to grow. But it tells you never take growth and jobs for granted, and I'm sure that you don't. But this is one interesting thing. So I travel a lot, and I was in Japan back on March 16th, and I got on the plane, and one of the biggest global business news stories is Valiant Pharmaceuticals, who has a production facility here, I understand. And so I say to myself, as I'm on that plane, what does that mean to my investment if this thing actually goes down? And I'm not exaggerating the seriousness of this. So if you take a look at the drug price last July, it was $330. March 16th, I was thinking about buying it, it was 45. Yesterday, it was 34. The CEO, who's now being forced out, is talking about selling off his assets for cash to lower a considerable debt. And then, you take a look at that chart, it almost looks like Nortel, but it becomes more worrying today because there's a class-action lawsuit against Valiant on their FX cold medication. And so I'm, you know, I'm concerned, and I'm seeing your community potentially impacted in a negative way, because as I understand it, cold FX is actually manufactured there. And I want to be part of this community and certainly contribute to the community and the community's well-being. We have calculated the projected tax benefit over the next 10 years to the community, and $8.5 million is very significant, but we need this development to move along, because it is time-sensitive, and we're in a seasonal climate, and I thought we'd be in the ground last fall. It's not council's fault, it's a myriad of considerations, but this is getting to be very timely, and the economy is not exactly ripe for the picking here in Canada over the last 18 months. Whoops, well, just a sec. I'll conclude, and I hope I am within the 10, 10 minutes here, but Steinbeck Land Holding is asking the city to authorize SLH through a motion of council to allow the swale drainage into our proposed commercial and industrial registered development. I did want to say that, you know, investment and investment capital is mobile, and another thing that I draw from Calgary and Alberta, is we have an NDP government, maybe we shouldn't be talking politics here, but it's had a remarkable impact on business, because they've raised the tax rate, they've raised minimum wage to $15, and they are driving people from the, from the province. If you want to Google Murray Edwards, he's left because of the environment that is not friendly to business. And we are asking that this proposal be considered, and I thank you for your time, and I will answer any questions, or we have our engineer here today, if there are any questions of him.
Okay, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Chalock. I wonder, is there anybody on council that has any questions of Mr. Chalock? Councillor Penner?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, Mr., do I pronounce it Chalock?
It's Chalock, C-H.
Chalock?
Yeah, David, you can call me David.
Okay. All right, David. Your proposal is to go from a higher-cost drainage system, basically, I think, if I'm reading this right, to a lower-cost ditch drainage. Is that correct?
Well, we're, we're going from a lower-cost condo approval to something mid-range between your full standard, which is a pipe sewer system, rather than the swale surface drainage, yes.
Okay. If I can, another question. The next question is, so this means that there is no bareland condo development?
That's what we're proposing, yes. And I think that's better, I quite frankly think that's much better for future buyers and the city, the aesthetics, and I look at those service roads. When we put in the lights at the interchange and the concrete roads in, it will be a terrific addition to your stable of assets.
One more question. The swale or the drainage ditches, do you have any idea of how that would be developed? Are they going to have concrete along the bottom for drainage, or are there any specs that you know of that you are anticipating?
I can defer to our engineer, but first I'll say I've seen everything from grass to a modest concrete belly to drainage tiles, okay, that are then accumulated further down. So, Kevin?
I think you've said it.
Okay. And I'm not an engineer, I'm a veterinarian, for God's sake.
Thank you.
Councillor Swagstra?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The question is, it's to administration, but it also likely involves our presenter, so, and the question is that often when we have a request for a change to requirements and such, we will often have an official variation hearing where we have, we say that we, you know, there's a request in terms of change in the lot size, all that sort of thing. And a variation hearing, it's an official public hearing, we have a staff report, a recommendation before us, and then we have the delegation before us, and then because we have all that information together, we then make a decision fairly quickly. This is a delegation where we're hearing from the delegate first, and we haven't had staff input yet, and I'm wondering if Mr. Workington could explain, is there a reason that this is, does this not qualify as a variance hearing? Is there a timing issue, or is this in a different category?
The simple response is that this is a different category. A variance that council is traditionally accustomed to seeing in a public hearing process relates to provisions within the city zoning bylaw. Zoning bylaw deals with land uses. What the delegation is requesting is a change to the city's infrastructure and construction spec that is applicable across the entire community, which is an overall standard that the city sets from time to time, and also reviews from time to time.
Can I ask a follow-up then?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again to administration, and the presenter may want to jump in in terms of clarifying, too. But to Mr. Workington again, the, so if this request were to be granted, does this, is it possible for the city to grant, if this is not a variation, is it then the city changing the specs across the city, and that would mean automatically that any future application that's similar to this would automatically change? Or is even, is it possible to do a localized approval, or is that something we need to do more research into to find out?
So while your CEO is considering that, just might I comment? I've been made aware of the existing Hespler development, which was approved by this city. Now, you have changed your standards, and as far as I know, in the jurisdictions that I work, there can be one-offs, if you will, okay? But of course, the, that's why I identified risk. What is the risk, and what is the benefit? It doesn't necessarily set a precedent.
Mr. Workington, you're, is that correct or not, or is that, or do we not have that information right now?
Well, I can, I can answer generally. The city spec is provided on a, to council on a review basis from time to time. The accumulation or the documentation that the city of Steinbeck uses for its construction spec is set for the community overall. With the way the approval process is conducted within the organization, city council has entrusted the administration of this specification to city staff to negotiate, or at least to advise potential developers of the required specifications for all developments within the community. While Mr. Chalock has mentioned that it could be a one-off, that may very well be, however, the standard that the city uses for all developments across the city is applicable for all C3 zoning, of which this is the zoning of the particular landholding. The city council would need to consider what is the fairness and equity across all C3 zoning, if this is in fact what council is considering.
I might just respond that this is a significant improvement over the condo designation that we already have approved.
Okay, councillor Siemens, you have a question?
Yes, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to administration or potentially, what happened to the curb and gutter that is part of our spec? That wasn't mentioned here or talked about. Is there a, so we are eliminating curb and gutter, or is that, was that not part of the standard spec?
That is part of the standard spec.
So we're also eliminating the curb and gutter aspect to this?
That depends on the request.
That's, that's how the Hespler development appears to me.
So what's the ask, would be the question?
The ask would be similar specs to the Hespler development, but we would provide cement roads much wider, and of course, as councillor Penner stated, you know, you would be able to specify what would be in that swale.
Okay, councillor, Susan Penner?
To administration, I'm just wondering, in terms of C3 developments, this is essentially would be a private group doing a C3 development, correct?
That's my understanding.
Is there any other development in the city, C3 development in the city that has been done by a private group, or has the city been responsible for that?
Based on the standard method of development, it is developer prompt and developer pay regardless of the zoning, whether it's residential, industrial, maybe to a lesser degree, but certainly commercial. And all of those costs with respect to infrastructure to be constructed according to city specs has been the responsibility of developers.
This is not an industrial... This is not an industrial park?
Correct. This is C-three zoning, which is considered within the city's, within the city zoning bylaw is considered commercial corridor zone. I can explain briefly if you'd, if you'd like.
I would just kind of like to know the difference there between make it industrial park versus what makes it.
Okay. Then for, for council's information, I can paraphrase the wording within the city's zoning bylaw. Commercial corridor zone district is intended for primarily for uses that provide commercial goods and services to residents of the broad community and beyond, in areas that are dependent on automobile access and exposed to heavy automobile traffic, but not including regional shopping malls or regional shopping areas. These commercial uses are subject to frequent view by the public and visitors to Steinbach and should provide an attractive appearance with landscaping, sufficient parking, and controlled traffic movement. C-three districts are generally located on arterial streets and/or arterial intersections. And I do have an explanation for, for industrial if you'd like, but I'd have to find it.
Yeah, I think, I'll let him look that up. Counselor Siemens had a follow-up question, correct?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, but to administration again.
Looking something up.
I apologize for that, but I would like to go back to the curb and gutter. That wasn't part of the presentation, and when I asked the question, I had the CEO shake his head, and I had one of your representatives nod his head. So, can I get clarification on, part of the ask here now then is that you're eliminating the curb and gutter as well on this roadway?
Yes.
But that hasn't been part of the ask at this point?
Yes. Our apologies for that, but yes, we were eliminating that, that curb. And, and I guess gutter, yes. It's just like Hespler.
Bob, can you take the podium, please?
Yeah, the, we would be eliminating the curb and gutter, and we would have those swales for, for water drainage. And like, as mentioned, the, the bottom of that swale is to be determined or agreed upon with, with your engineer. But, and it would be a concrete street, very similar to, or just like Hespler, except Hespler has a twenty-four foot top, and this would have a thirty-two foot top. So if you can envision Hespler eight feet wider. That, that street right there, about eight feet wider. Okay. And if you look at this, there's, there's no need for a curb.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Workington, did you find the, what you're looking for there?
I did. The, the development that the delegation refers to has primarily industri, light industrial zoning, and the brief description within the city zoning bylaw refers to light industrial district is intended to provide for light manufacturing, processing, service, storage, wholesale, and distribution operations, with all operations contained within an enclosed building and some limited outside storage. There is further description of heavy industrial that, again, is, is lesser of an impact within that, that particular development, but the, the related uses are more intense with respect to manufacturing, as I just read out for light industrial.
So is that C-three?
That was industrial.
It is an industrial zone which is zoned M-one and M-two.
Yeah, and if I could just add to that, we envision...
I didn't get you to give your name before, but it's on camera, so.
Bob Schinkel.
I know, yeah, but.
What we envision is a blend of commercial-industrial, where the, the people along the highway would, would be looking maybe more, or lend itself maybe a little more to the commercial, but where the second tier would most definitely lend itself very well to, to the industrial. So, we would envision that to be a blend of the, of the two, even though the zoning is commercial.
Mr. Workington, you had your, you had a comment on that?
Yes, just wanted to provide clarification for council that Mr., Mr. Schinkel did explain further, but at present, the entire parcel under the proposed development in the current phase and the expected development in future phases is currently all zoned C-three, which is the commercial corridor zone.
So there, so there's a lot more here than what we are going to be able to decide today. I take it. I'm gonna, I, I, and I understand that there's some urgency to this, and I think as council, I think as a city, I think we want to make sure that we do the right thing, and sometimes we, we feel the, you know, sufficient urgency that we want to make some decisions right of ways, and, and we want to be compliant with our, our ratepayers and stuff. I think it's probably in our best interest to maybe get a little bit more background information from administration, and so that we can make a more intelligent and a, and a better decision. So I'm, I'm going to ask, I'm going to refer this to, to administration. I'm going to ask them to come up with more information for our next meeting. Now, unfortunately, we're not having a meeting on the nineteenth because it's election day, so this would put us into May. Is that going to cramp your style a lot?
Well, I'm, I'm going to say this, and that, that's just, you know, business-friendly environments and, and the essence of time. Uh, you know, we'll soon be at July, and we can't even put out tenders. That's employment for this community. There are people who want to establish businesses here. And if the answer is no, then say no, you know? But, you know, we're trying to be somewhat, I wouldn't say innovative, because you've done it before, without risk, and one size doesn't fit all. One size...
I get, I get that, I, I think.
Thank you for listening, that's all I say.
Excuse me, Deputy Mayor. I have a question for Mr. ...
Mr. Funk.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Many of the concerns when you don't have curb and gutter are the fact that highway tractors, big trucks, heavy equipment will drive on the shoulders of the, of the road. In our present, on, on Hespler, has there been repair done to the shoulders due to heavy equipment damage?
I'm not aware of particular examples, but I expect that there have been.
Keep in mind that our road will be considerably wider.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, and, well, since we're, we're pressed for time, and I'm looking at this, and I'm, I'm liking the increase, the upgrades, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion.
Can I, can I get, Counselor Penner had a question first, right? So, let's, let's address that question first, thanks.
Yes, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to administration. What would be the implications of us allowing this spec instead of following the city's specs for this designation? What would be the implication? Are we opening it up for everyone else? Are we, are we being unfair? What, tell me what the implications are.
I can think of several. One, first and foremost, would be the fairness and equity to all other C-three landowners and developers within the city of Steinbach. The city of Steinbach is an urban center. The spec has been developed with an essential focus on the fact that it is offering a unique infrastructure and service mix to potential developers, and that is with an urban-profile infrastructure system. What is being suggested is a movement to reduce the level of surface, service to more of a rural profile, which can be found in many other communities throughout Manitoba. But the understanding that I have of the community is that the urban profile has been, has been fairly important to the city's specification standards for many, many years. Insofar as the obligation to negotiate with developers, that has been an obligation that has been delegated by city council to administration because of the wealth of expertise, knowledge, and experience that's needed in order to be able to negotiate these particular services and specifications with proposed, or potential developers. And at this point, it would be a concern to administration if, if council would be prepared to consider a change to that specification before further information is provided.
Thank you.
Could I just respond to that? That there is, you know, experts, and we have our expert, and you have your experts. They're advisors. They're not authorities. They're advisors. Never forget that. And remember that the bureaucrats and your staff respond to you. We are here to ask council to guide this through. That's not to undermine the bureaucrats who work for you. But have there been other private developers do commercial development in this town recently? I ask you to think about that.
Yeah, I, I had, I had a question. I hadn't spoken, and I was waiting for everybody else to. So I've, I've got a question, I've got a question as well. I've got a question of administration here. In, in regards to the Hespler, we don't only have Hespler, we also have some of this in the, in the industrial park, right? On, on Industrial Road, right? There's also some ditches there, right? We have, we have two commercial areas that have...
There is an older industrial park within the city of Steinbach that has been in place since, I believe, the late sixties. That particular development, because of its age, did have a spec that was significantly different than other industrial areas within the city, yes.
And, and one, one more question. When we look at the Hespler industrial park, do we have any, any commercial and, and industrial operations in there currently?
No, they are all zoned industrial.
They're all industrial, there's no commercial in there at all?
Under the zoning, it is all industrial.
Is there some flexibility as to the zoning, like that, that they can operate a, a commercial establishment in an industrial zone?
Subject to particular requirements within the city of Steinbach zoning bylaw, there are opportunities. For example, there was a property located in the Hespler industrial park for which there was a recent conditional use application to allow a retail storefront within the industrial zone, but it is subject to a review of council and a public hearing process.
So it goes through a process, so if there's, in other words, if there's some applications for things that are, don't fit the industrial or the commercial, they can make application to?
Only with respecting to land uses.
Okay. Okay. Okay, if there's anything, is there any further you want to add?
No, I think we've had a fair hearing, and I appreciate you.
You have another...
Another question back. Can you, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, can you put up the picture, the schematic you had?
Okay, just a moment. I think it's, this is the most unusual thing where you have to turn around. Pardon me. Oh, sorry. That one?
What happened to the service road?
Just a minute.
It's gone.
It's gone?
Yeah.
So we, we, we are improving, the service road's existing. If you go out there today, there's potholes, there's gravel, there's water, there's muddy, there's dirty. I should put a car wash in there, is what I should do.
Maybe I can clarify that. That, that service road was not built to spec, and highways were not going to allow any development off that service road, so that service road has to go.
We're investing a lot in this development.
Okay, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna close the, the portion of the meeting. I'm gonna open the council meeting. Is there anything, anyway, you, you indicated you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Given all these things, given the, what we're going through, that we're bouncing back from, the, the fact that we're already into April, next month's May, we're almost, like you say, I guess, July, I'd like to, and seeing the improvements that have been made, I'd like to see these improvements. I think the road's much better, the, I like the sewer factor, all those things. I'd like to make a motion that we approve, that we look at provenness.
Okay, is there a second or for that? Counselor Penner? Okay, you want to speak further to that?
Yes, it's, I guess I've said it already in my, in my lead-up to the motion, but I think sometimes it's, it looks like that we have to start being somewhat business-friendly. We get, we get told this by the visiting community frequently, people are, come and talk to us, and I think that this is a good fit. This is the first time that we've had a private company group actually develop a commercial corridor, a commercial zoning, and I think it's good, I think it's necessary. Some of the, the businesses that are already committed are high-profile businesses, I think it's, I think they're gonna help sell other lots. I think this is something that's gonna fill up, and it's gonna be good, and the, and of course, the tax base is there forever, and so I'd like to, I'd like to move forward with this. This is, this is the second time it's come back. It's not gonna go away. I think we need to, we need to start working with this and starting to see what we can make and how we can make this right.
Okay. Any further?
Can we just clarify the motion, first of all?
Oh, that we, that we approve the, the upgrades, I guess, the barriers, or the upgrades?
Concrete?
Concrete, right, that we're approving to go to a concrete, wider road, the sewer and, yeah, the, the city sewer and the city water, and then the swell drainage.
Okay, does that include anything to do with the commercial or the industrial? Like, does that remain that one?
The zoning would remain the same.
Okay, so, okay, but so that does, the zoning doesn't change, correct?
I guess my, my only comment, what I'm going to speak to, is that if our specs are so stringent that private developers make some, it's so difficult to develop that it prices them right out of the market, then we need to reevaluate, I think, to determine what our specs are and find a better balance of what the city needs for specs versus what will still allow business and industry to be able to invest in our community.
Okay. Any other comments? Counselor Siemens?
I'd like clarity on the motion, please. Can we get through administration, what the motion says right now?
I think that's, that's kind of sums it up there, does it not? Yeah. But it, but it's upgrade the, the condo, see, they've already got a condo approved, right? So, sorry.
Do the upgrades from the condo.
I, I would like to clarify for council that accord, in accordance with city specs, the resolution should be clarified that it is not to upgrade the standards, it is actually to downgrade the city's standards to a spec that is allowed, which is contrary to what the city's standard spec is for the proposed development.
So, so can I suggest that we, that we worded, that we, that we approve, that we approve the, the request to, to put in, allow the, the developer to put in gravity sewer, concrete streets, and a swell drainage in the development? Yes, Mr. Workington?
Perhaps because there is a general uncertainty as to what the intent is, I would just like to add that my suggestion or recommendation for council is that if there is further clarity that is required, that administration could summarize and prepare for council's consideration at a future meeting, if council so chooses.
We got the floor, sir?
Yeah.
I think, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I think there's too much gray areas here. I'm not, I'm still not clear on the motion, because the motion still doesn't deal with the curb and gutter issue. It still doesn't deal with some of the issues that have been brought forward. So, there was no ask for some of that, so that has, that's all verbal, hasn't been in writing. We didn't get a report ahead of time, so that we can review it ahead of time. All of it happened here at the meeting. I can't, there's too many gray areas. I would like to report from administration on exactly what the process is here to, so that there's clarity. There's no clarity right now, and I'm, I'm unsure of what the motion is, and so I would vote against this motion, because I don't know what I'd be voting on.
Counselor Swigster?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I, at this stage right now, I can't support the motion, and the, it's not because I'm opposed to considering the request, but as been, has been stated, we need proper information before making a decision. And normally, anytime we have any kind of application like this, whether it's in a variance hearing for a zoning, or whether it's in a unique request like this, is we variance hearing for a zoning, or whether it's in a unique request like this, is we always get our staff input, we get a written report, a summary, so we have time to think about it, because we need to consider implications. And I will say for the record that we value the advice from our staff, they're not bureaucrats, they're staff members, and we value their advice. It doesn't mean we always follow their advice on every occasion, but we, we value it because it's, because it's important, because they're experts in terms of how the city is administered, so we have to take that into consideration. So we cannot make a decision today, not with the information that we have here, not with the lack of clarity we have. I'm not opposed to considering the request, but we, here's some basic things we need answers on. We need to know, for example, does, is this, is this actually a one-off, or does it affect everything? What is, what is this going to affect in terms of future development in the city? We don't know. We've heard our CEO explicitly tell us that that is the type of information that has to be looked into. This is, you know, I understand time pressures, I understand all of that, but in a situation like this, we need to have proper information. I can't think of another time where we would make a decision of this nature, where we have a public request and we don't have the other side in terms of the information. I'm not saying no forever, but I will vote against this motion as it stands, because I do not have enough information to make a proper decision.
Would you like to withdraw the motion?
Yeah, can we withdraw until we can look at it?
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna recommend that administration bring us a recommendation at the next meeting, and with her proposal. I, I, the question that, one of the questions that I did have was, there was no formal application made, was there? So...
There was no, we, we queried...
No, this is not public hearing anymore.
We queried, and we were advised that this is all that was needed.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, we would like, we would like to deal with this, and I think, I think that there is a certain amount of warmth to the proposal, but I think we do need to have a little bit more information. It's kind of loose right now, and if we're gonna make a decision now, it's not gonna be a very good one, so, I, I'm sorry, I...
Could I just get clarification then in terms of...
No, we can't, sorry. So, we'll, we'll defer this to the next meeting, which would be the first meeting in May, correct? Mr. Workington?
Yes.
And you'll bring a recommendation to council?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.